Close up and coming to the front. We want to make a request with all eyes.
Jaga fansa ra dume la rta man no a ro na rta kupa jalukorotla re meka dinau.
As we start our proceedings with the national agenda.
Jaga far smla dwa ro naga ina musichha.
Ina ina la ni anay ladies Kenui Ma. I'm the one that will be in charge of this proceedings.
Lina la me ke mototekhi ke niuima. Ke na kita etelambele kopa noa le tati la bupe no.
Can we request the team to you guys with the national agenda?
Okare telambele ka ina musichha.
Thank you, we can take our seats.
Kala paka la kula fase.
Like as I indicated, my name is Kenui Ma. I am the chairperson of the general committee on the general intelligence laws amendment bill.
Jaga ki piri le kua smla lo kong lina la me ke ke niuima. Ke na motula stilo a komitina kua na ya mametelo ya mula utumo ya kaka ne lo ya kutroj.
I'm not alone, I'm with the committee members too. Because this is a committee from the national council of provinces. So I'll request the members of the other committee that this is a company made with the best themselves. So that you know who, who they are and where they come from.
Kha ki ta me ke le nosi ki ta ma le ma lo ko a komitiba ba diran le na. Jaluka na kua e ki ta ba le ta kore le bo le me ki ti su kore ke bo ma.
Now like as I said, I'm from the northern Cape province. Because national council of provinces made up of permanent divisions and special divisions for provinces.
Na jaga ki piri le ki tuako province nya notaren KB. Jaga li tu kura ma lo ko a national council of provinces ki ma lo ko a emiti di province te di farlo kanin.
Thank you.
Eh molue. Ika malambele kuso ki swa nita. Diploma and Eastern Cape are the members of the committee, thank you.
Dumela lina la me ke mototekhi ngisa. Ngita eh ki tuako Western Cape ke le lo kula komitie.
Hi dumela. Na ke na China Dodofu ki tuako ha noa noa noa. Muka noo pirima.
Eh good day, eh my name is China Dodofu from the northwest province, okonimo pirima.
Good morning everyone, I'm Catherine Esfarki from the western Cape.
Dumela bahai tu lina la me ke Catherine La Buskane, kutoako Western Cape.
Dumela, my name is Lika. Our committee, here noa. My name is Rikus Bonmost, I'm from the western Cape.
Ki le lo kula la le kua kolo Western Cape.
Good morning dumela. My name is Shayda Shayk, I'm from the province of Limbo.
Lina la me ke Shayda Shayk kutoako province nya Limbo.
Good morning, my name is Farine Dwey, I'm also from the north west province.
Dumela lina la me ke far ti tu e do kutoako okonimo pirima.
Thank you. We are also accompanied by a team, a team of technical people. You might next sit next to yourself down there. I suspect you might also want to know who they are. It's always important that you know who, who are the brain behind the work, the beautiful work that parliamentarians are doing. So I want them to introduce themselves too.
Eh kha ki ta ma ya le ba ti ra ba ti ba ro na kutoako ba la le de. Eh ki ta kura koba koka ta ta kore le bo le me ki ti su kore ke bo ma. Kori ti su kora to ta ba ba re me no ke bu ti ro nya ro na ke bo ma.
Do you have a voting mic?
Molue ni ika malambele kunatimje mane, I'm the legal advisor to the committee before, thank you.
Dumela lina la me ke no ku le doso lejey, I'm the country advisor to the committee.
Good morning everyone, my name is Uncle Glock and I'm also assisting the committee with country advice.
Dumela, lina la ka ki king unene committee secretary assisting the top committee, thank you.
Dumela lina la me ke no la matenise ki committee secretary ya komitino.
Dumela, na ki Calvin Mangani, office manager.
Thank you, thank you for that introduction. At this point in time now, we invite councillor Tato Mosaku of the ward thirty-three to formally welcome us as the delegation from parliament.
Ka spaka seritla kupa mukansela ro na Tato, Mosaku kutoa wote ti kuta kore. Ote thirty-three kuta kore amokhe.
Alu dumela ba koro. Legreva. Retee. Ta ki dumela dise baba la me de ba ro na. Ke re ti fote uko mo kwa seko moses kota ne. Kya la amokhe la mesu kolo bo kolo. Tu ko kori kya amokhe le ba ti ba moses kota ne. Kori riye fe re krai kuso le fe ne re kra ka na kua e re krea. Ebe ro na kolo bo tu koka kore, re ne te kri to zaka. Ka ore ke ro na, ka ro na, re ta kona kore. Di improvement di re re koka kore di ne te. Tu kono ri ma metalre, tu kono ri ne le ku zilso. Mo maspalema ro na wa moses kota ne, mo province nya ro na ya kori ki pirima, mo country nya ro na ya Africa war. Ka ona manze au ke re keska no mo tele, ke re kya le bo ka ba koro, liya amokhe ze. Et lis ti venyerile koyona e kainadi nja. So I can't say re bo fe le di nja. Ha re na di nja mo jara te e liya amokhe ze ba koro. Are zen ka ro lo re, re nzen di nja za ro na. Re straight to the point de, he lo re bezze na kua ere ka za re bezze. Ake ri thrisi, ake ri thrisi ba koro ba ka kya le bo.
Good morning!
Thank you, thank you councillor Nisabo for welcoming us. And now we can rest and engage with our community members.
Ki abo le koka mukansela ra ka kore amokhe la, no kura tu e za ba kri. Eh jaga no ta jana mu ti ro nya ro na le tati.
What we do now is to invite the rep from the safety health to just give us a sense in terms of what does this is our protocols that has to be observed in relation to where we are. I guess the delegate will introduce himself and then take the podium.
Ka jaga ki ta kupa webe diwa ro na wa kua baba ni ne te fa za kurostre le zirili kore. At eh a re ta kese za jana kore, no ku ti la ka te le nze nja.
Dumela bahai tu, lina la ka ke je. Le na ke ma na monothwaist, ki tuako khatla ka ne laf. Eh bahai tu, ka kuna le ku na e za wa tu kha ni zo.
Alu la lo koe na ba. Je. I think it was that.
Welcome, my name is Jeff Frimulefe, I'm health and safety compliance officer for parliament. I was born here in North West ASW. I'm from another village just around here called Saraganyani. In case of emergency.
Waru kanal, waru kanal le ma ba ka a tu kha ni zo.
Will take orders from the chairperson who's the only person who's controlling the whole house.
Retata fe la, retata fe la. Se reta presen kulele wa ki stilo, ka kura ke le to ta ake le tantiro ya keta tati la bupe.
The, 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 the community hall that we are occupying has six emergency exits.
Eh ito de halahala, erke bo ke ona ba kaisi, ke na le me ja bo ikana, mirata, erke e di san kana bo ya tu kha ni zo.
The front two entrances or exits will be used by members of parliament to exit.
Ma ba kiambele ke kobele atani swa ki ma lo ko a paralende.
By the time members of parliament exit, the, the, the hall community are requested to sit down so that you can be coordinated by our protection services to move and to use the doors at the back of the, of the hall.
Ka na kua e ufa ma lo ko a di san ya bo ne beke uko tuakatu kha ni zo. Lo na le ta ri ku fe za na kore liu bo fa tu kela ba, ti le to ba de laela, kore ni tu kui ti re jana.
Our assembly point is at the netball court at the back of the hall where we'll all gather there to take further instructions from those who'll be coordinating emergency situation.
Fa ka na kua kona di la halajalo ta kopa de la kua, sa vi ke ba de kolo, de mi bo ra kua. Wa ino ko re ba ta re ba de fa, eh di san za kore, kura cha tu kore bo kui ti re ka kova ra.
And then lastly, the hall is also allocated with six, eh, eh, fire extinguishers in case of fire. But there are those from parliament who are trained to use, to make use of these extinguishers. Not anyone from this hall will be allowed to do that.
Kapi tule halahala, eh, eh na le di ti ma, di di swazaku di ma lo di de ta ta. Se lo ko re ba di san ma fa, be nant nja lo re na le ba ta ni ri ba ro na kuka kala le de. Ba lo ko ba ka ti si zu, okati ra si.
Thank you councillor.
My appreciation for that brief, so that this chair people should know where to go in case of a challenge.
Ki re bo ke ti ta lu so e uko re ba tu ra na ba ta ba izi kore. Ba re ka na le, le ba ka lo la tu kha ni zo, ba tu koro ba ti re.
Now it's time at least just to, to give a sense as to why we are here.
Pa jaga na ke na kua kora ta lu so kore, kore lo ke de fa, kopa le de mu bupe no.
We are here to, to get the news of our community in terms of what you call chillab.
Re ti le fa ku ta ku to ba e ku to ama kri ka xasir si pisarre di chillab.
This bill I'm made to understand throughout this week, there were a number of engagements with our community to, to give them a reflection in terms of what does this bill entail.
Eh ki piri le jalo ko ro mota ma oya beke eh, ba kri ba ne ba ta lu se uwa kore to ta kola ucho mo o, kuku akaha e.
So this general intelligence laws amendment bill is aimed at restructuring our intelligence services.
Mula utumo o, mula utumo o wa mametelo. Ya kua ma mete la me la wa na ye da kuta koro na ke. Wika ele te jalo ko siyani sa za kutroj di mona ke ze ke di ti kuka kore siyani si we.
That would mean that it will pay attention to, usually to be criminal intelligence services. There will also be defense intelligence services, there will also be state security agencies.
So se wa kona, di di relevanti di tatsu se te di ka kuka kutroj di mona ke. Ikana de di ama kusini, kosa za tere le so ya na, kosa za, za uso, ya, eh, ya zamiswe ya uso. So le di tati lo kona ta ba di we we.
Given our lived experience of the last ten years, there are recommendations that were made by various panels.
Eh widi wa ke te di fi di le mo renilele di, di ti si no za kore. Eke de okanamore da cha na la, ade le te di faro, ali, kaga di ti si no za kore, eke de ku kuka kore, kore de le fa kua ba kaniwa de.
More than that, the president, when he was appointed in twenty eighteen, he appointed a high level panel review.
Mo president de ne ne ka, wa wa twenty eighteen fa asa, kuso mo president de. One ah tamajalo komitie e o ya, ya se mosas kua kutu sa ba de le di si.
But more than that, the July twenty-one unrest in Kuzuma talan hunting also gave impetus to the need to reorganize our intelligence services.
Kapi se si la kati ngaji July twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. Senisa kava, sa ra, uso sa, kora kua ku kuka kore, le bela ti kaya bo tu kodi seja, mona kaniya ro na.
So as a result thereof, the bill is proposing to divide the state security agency into two services.
Ka kaja lo kuso e, e ra ta jalo ki ke le la koo ka kau kanya. Se za kutroj di ka ma kada ala ma be.
So therefore, it's not only just the money, but also we are also strengthening coordination, accountability and also the relationship of the intelligence services.
Kapi re le, re le ka ta ta koma ta fa sa za ba izi ya za kutroj di, mo na ke, kore e de e ma ta ke se kore lo ku ti la ka chale no.
Now, the national assembly, because parliament is made up of two houses. So the national assembly has finished its business.
Eh anta mo parlament de ke na le, tu se fe ti, e un N E S U P, jana ba de ba e, e ba ke ti ti ro ya ro na.
As part of the person of the year, where, because they're also in an adult community, trying to lay on a, a national council of provinces.
Eh, bo di bo yo ya bo ne, ka kura le bo le ba ti re ga, se ro na si la fa bupe no.
Number of issues were raised during their public consultations because they targeted five provinces in the national assembly, so our focus will be on the four provinces.
Eh unile ki ta kuso ze ma lo ku di province ze, wa e ze ba di si, le se ta, e ze ba di si. Jalo na de le, S U Pire, zoko le bela, the provinces zen, e ze wasa kona uchelamutso.
So in the consultation, the public, the number of elders in the fight, among them definitions within the bill also, eh, eh, issues around the setting of public events.
Eh unile le di ta kuso ze, ba ne ba ne ba di ta kuso ka na kua ya bo ne. Se ka e kore ba ba ta kutso kau, juama reo ma, wa a ta ka la bo kola utumo. Eh kamo kone, o trodi wa, ya na be, ya ma a.
But also what they told me was, in their course of analysis, collection of information, what has to happen when they are able to do their work to identify an individual that needs their attention.
Kapi mo za ma oyo ya tu ra bo ne, ba ku ta fe le ta, kisestu antu si ti re kore. Ba kone ko usu ba kuto kori de ka na bo ya, ba ba ti ra ti ro ya ro na.
But also one of the work that they were doing was to make a reflection in terms of guard interceptions. Because people raised issues around guard interceptions, particularly given the outcome of the amabu, guyne judgment in twenty twenty-one.
Kapi ba kri ba ne ba ta kesa, ma ti yo kuka, o, eka, sunya, sunya. Eh, o, ki ta kura di ka be de ro ya za, kola kha no, ku kaka kha. Woi lo kura ba kri ba ne ba ta kesa, ma ti yo kua kona ka ni ta di.
There are two steps in relation to what happens during guard interceptions.
Eh kuna le ki ta tu di beze, di la halan ka na bo e o ya, o, o, sunya, sunya.
What will, what even happens is that in the course of connection and analysis, they will then approach, if it is necessary, that they come across a particular information that is of their interest for them, they will then approach the judge who leads the interception center.
Ka kuna le, ku kuka kala ku ti la kha ni zo. Ba ta tona kura ba ku e le moa kuti, o, o, o ta ke kati le kiti, e o, o, misa na le ne ka yo na, e o, ya, o, o, sunya, sunya, kadi ku kaka kha.
But once they have done that, there's also another process of post-interception process.
Le fa ba di le jalo, kuna lo kora lo kore, se usi ti re kabe le mo ra.
So what is important is, is the fact that we need to balance the work that the intelligence services does during their course of connection and analysis with the rules of the constitution, the rule of law, the right to protect individuals.
Se rucha la ku si ti la ke kona, re jalo ka le, di ka, no za ma iso. Se lo ko ti tatu di ti re ka na bo, e o, ya, o, zengat ti so kola utumo o.
Because also this bill talks to oversight of the intelligence services to hold them accountable. Then it's also a reflection on the web of the inspector general of intelligence.
Se kapi ku ti ro ya, ma ta ke di, o, o, ba mete za kutroj di, o, de fe za kore.
To hold the, the web of the intelligence services accountable.
Oh kore, a, ba ba, ba ba ti ra, okan tu e, ama, ma ze me ka ra be, ya tu e ba iti ra.
But also more than that, the lessons learned during the July twenty twenty-one is that there is a need also for, for NICOC, the structure that we call the National Intelligence Coordinating Committee to also update again so that we are not caught by surprise again.
Se si ti le kuka kura ku fe kura za July twenty-one, o, supele ta ta kora, ku kuka kore, re, re, ma ta fa ze. Ore skare, skatale, ki se la eke de, ti lo di ti ra kala, kona eke de, re, re, mo ma ro, kari si koto ta ku ti ra kala.
So, so that's what the bill talks to also to, to strengthen the dependence of the inspector general of intelligence and NICOC.
Kapi mo la utumo o, ufa, eh, amokhe de ra la, o, okan za kutroj di mona ke. Ma ta akor le, ne akor na ku ti kore bo de ba, ku zengat ti so, eh, ti kaze a kona, kucha lo la kore, kore na kaya re, kore nu kui si wele ze.
But also because the work of the committee of the joint standing committee of intelligence has some lived experience, there are a number of players that, that, that could be identified around strengthening the web of the inspector general of intelligence and also the committee staff.
Eh ti ro e ya okai ti ka kare se, o, wa za kutroj di. Eh, ki, akare za kapi lo kore, ro na le ku komitie lo kona ko, e, omo na ya, ma ta akor le, ne akor lo ko. Tu e le la a, ma ta fa ze, ti me la o, e, za ni sa za kutroj di mona ke.
So the issues about the, eh, the bill covering the election of the deputy chairperson of the joint standing committee of intelligence is some of the issues that are of interest to the public. And that was identified from the national assembly processes.
Eh, kapi nza ya koro kutroj di we, kapi yo, o, ta ta mang, o, ta ke di, o, ba me za, za, za kutroj di. Kapi lo le ke ta e, lo ke ta re ke ta ta wa, national assembly ka na bo ya, di san lo, de ba a.
The deputy chair to the intelligence, inspector general of intelligence.
Eh, kota za, okai ka kare tuwa za kutroj di.
They also need to have an evaluation committee on some of the issues that emerged from those processes.
Kapi ta kuka kona le komitie eska sekan, ti te o seja, e, ta e, okaki ta cheka na kua ya ku kuka, isamiswa komitie e.
But more than that, also the alignment of the annual reporting of the, of the committee of the joint standing committee of intelligence with the parliamentary reporting requirements.
Ya kua na kori di komitie ze, ya za ma iso na, me beki, ya, nyane la, nisasi ti ra kala o, o, ba paralende.
So these are the three sections that obviously were the final report to the national assembly were not adopted.
Ki di kaze taru ze, o, koba ne ba de la na ta pe koko national assembly, me di kaze, ka ya ka za, za te nele.
The last point there is the amendment to the secret services act of number fifty-six of nineteen seventy-eight. Because it talks to the establishment of the evaluation committee within twelve months of the act having been passed. The secrets, the amendment, the establishment of the evaluation committee.
Kuna le komitie e ka ne ke di si ka seko.
So it is important that as you make inputs, it might, there might be a need for you to make reflections of that.
Kuna le kaya ku kua kua kore, fa ni ka be le ta fa le kona la ka, ta di chayu za ro na, ebentele na liwa na kuma ra, ku di sa la fa le kona.
So international chillab is aimed at streamlining our web.
Ka bu ku ta le fe la, chillab e, e di ra kore, ti ro ya ro na, itza ma isin ke ka cha ne.
The idea is to ensure that we hold the intelligence services accountable to their work.
Ma e kele lo ma hulu ke kore ba ba za kutroj di ba, ba ko lo ku ika ra be, mu ti ro e ya ro na.
They work efficiently and effectively within the bounds of the rules of the constitution.
Kore a, ba di ra sinke, kosa ma iso na, le me ono, lo ku ika ra be la, mo, mula uti o.
But more than that, to avoid the abuse.
Me ku fe ta fo, ba koka me de ke e, ya kora ku san na lo, koso ka ka ki, wa kosa kona di si si nte, ka bo la.
But more than that, also to ensure that they protect the public, the national security takes top priority.
Kone ke fa za kore, isre le za ba kri, lo kora ba ze le za, ba ta za bu kori, ba le ke ha de ho, koka si le le za si chha.
But it's also critical is the need to appreciate the importance of why the public must make input to this bills.
Se si kapi san kaya, kika ni kaya e, ro na re de ba kri, reta ne la ku kora re de, di di twa e lo, mula utumo o.
Parliament makes laws.
Parlament de di ra de la.
That takes the size oversight over the executive and the other three spheres or two spheres of government. But what is critical is to ensure that as they pass laws, the public make inputs so that the outcome of those laws have the benefit of your inputs. There's been a number of court judgments, like La Mosa judgment where laws of parliament was set aside by the highest court of this land because not enough space and opportunity was given to public to make inputs in those laws. So we want you to own this Gila. The final product, you must be proud of yourself when it is passed, when it is ascended or signed by the president that indeed I took part in that. Now, as we move towards creating, giving you opportunity now to participate, there are house moves that has to be observed.
If you've got a contribution that you'd like to make, may you please raise your hand.
The doctor, not governor, who will identify you by giving you a number. So the first phase it will be, will identify ten people. Give that, give those ten people to make their submissions. But then, as, as you take the center stage, indicate who you are. Your name and surname. Indicate whether you support the bill or not support the bill. Then also then put your views across. We, we also have a form here that will give to you so that you are then able to, 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 for us, that will enable us to capture your details and your submission. Because the hall is full, it will be reasonable at least for you to make your point in three minutes. Three minutes, the three minutes is allowed because within parliament when you make a determination, when you make a motion without notice or a notice of motion, we are able to do that within three minutes. So it is important that you take this process seriously. So that we will enrich the proposals that the National Assembly House has put across to the public that we received as the committee of this National Council of Province to take it further before it goes to the president. Let's then start with this room. Let's invite ten names from this room. You are one. Two. Yeah, that's two, yeah. Yeah, two, three, yeah, you are three there, yeah, yes. See, that, that will be two, and then you'll be three, and then that will be four, and then five. Yes, just as they move, yeah. Yeah, that's okay, then the lady with the white hat, that's number, that's one, two, three, four, five. Can we have another ten, five from this? Let's start here, that's six. Six, man, take your seat, yeah, and then that's seven. That will be eight, the gentleman with the white, and then nine of the. You have ten? Do you have ten? Okay, can we have one, yeah, the gentleman here, you'll be ten, so that's how we are going to proceed. Yeah, like I said, we, you have three minutes, Mama, you can now take, take the podium, thank you.
I, I greet you, but I've got a concern because we arrived here on time and you people were delayed. Some of us, we are elderly people, we have to wake up in the morning, drink the medication, and then for you, you just come here very late. So for me, somebody of my caliber, really three minutes is not enough.
Thank you, Mama, our apology on behalf of the committee. We respect the views that you express, hence the apology that you are putting across. If you can just greet us and then introduce yourself.
I greet you all. My name is Mabatu Muanaquena from Wote Titi. In Moses Portale Municipality. Thank you so much and I'm so grateful.
Can I just make a proposal, Mama, make a sentence and then allow the translator to translate so that, the interpreter to translate so that your views can be well captured by the table, thank you, Mama.
My name is Mabatu Muanaquena from Wote Titi, Moses Portale Municipality. I am so grateful that you're coming here with the bill. And what makes me more happy is that if I not elected you, you people wouldn't be seated where you are sitting. I'm very happy that, I'm very happy that, that you are here. And then, but I'm still have a concern about your issue of not being on time. But the other concern is that people are being killed. And those people being killed are being killed by their fellow brothers, fellow black brothers. I support the bill hundred percent.
Thank you, thank you, Mama, number two.
Greetings. I am Haidiwi Violetzi Hume from Wote Titi. I support the bill. My contribution is that how about parliament? Please, let's look at the, at the borders, especially when it comes to the security there. Can we change it? My concern is about the issue of the borders, how the people come in and out here. It's not something that we are happy with. So my suggestion is how about you change the security there by the borders at least for two months? Because when AKU was murdered, we don't know how those people got inside the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mama, number three.
Good day. Good afternoon, my name is Zayele Zeta.
My name is Zayele Zeta.
I am from Wote, Moses Portale.
Moses, eh, Woten in Moses Portale. Local municipality. First, the, and take the.
Yeah, I supported because I understand what it entails to achieve and what it will bring for us as a country. I also have a concern in the reservation when it comes to national security because when we look into other international security agencies within the, within the country borders. First of all, as we are a democratic country. That endures freedom. I am concerned that won't this bill now limit our freedom wherever you find that the national intelligence security comes into our privacy in the, in the form of saying that they are trying to protect us. So if, 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 if those issues can be solved now, that even if that way is passed, it does not now interfere into our privacy lives, into our private lives, and we are able to continue as a free and democratic country. Besides that, I do support it.
Thank you, number four.
Greetings to everyone. My, I have a very serious concern about foreigners from their own countries who are here to just kind of destroy our own country. If now currently we are unable to open businesses in our own country because those foreigners have now taken over. Even our own country is, is not doing well economically because of these foreigners. Even when we as South Africans try to open our business, it becomes very difficult because now we have to compete with them because now their prices are very low. I would really like to see a situation where they are taken out of our country and they just come here as visitors. If that was the case, then we would then be able to open our businesses and then government would just come and monitor and give us support where we need support. The previous government, they used to give support to business people. Now currently we don't get any support because now the foreigners have taken over everything now. I support the bill, I support the bill, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Madam, that was, that's number six, yeah, five, yes. You can, you can, you can speak, Mama. Can you move closer to the mic?
Greetings to everyone. My name is Motibebe Beisi. From unit eight, Mopwase. In Wote Titi. I really thank you for all your efforts. I really, really appreciate your presence, your presence here to come and deal with the challenges that we have here. I support the bill. I support the bill. I support the bill. Please continue doing your work.
Thank you, thank you, thank you Mama. We'll now invite you to also take the stage.
Greetings to everyone here. My name is Esme Mayne. I support the bill. I have a very serious problem with Nigerians who are here in Mokwase. We have a lot of them here. They are here and are now suppliers of drugs to our children. And our children's future is now diminishing in front of us. The parents of the children are in bushland and financially strapped. At North West, we currently have only one rehabilitation center which has to cater for our children. Now our children now have to wait for a period of a year before they can be admitted. As I speak, most of our kids who are back in the drugs are going to go home. As I'm talking here, most of our kids who are now into drugs are in prisons. Because it seems there is no help at all. From 2018, we, the parents who are pensioners, have opened a rehabilitation center. We bought a piece of land. We've got a structure that we have built. Oh, we don't have the building yet, but we need the funds to build the structure. I'm appealing to the committee here to please intervene because we are concerned about our kids' children's future. That is my humble appeal to you to please assist us to build the rehabilitation center. It's very painful for us as parents to have to end up allowing our children to go to prison because we feel so very helpless. So we are really appealing to the committee to assist us. It really amazes me why this whole of North West, we've got only one rehabilitation center. We appeal for your assistance. Please call me.
Thank you, thank you. We'll now request our next speaker to put his face across.
Good day. My name is Max Legava. I'm from Wattekiwa in Moses Scottany. I only support the bill, only on condition that it will include the situation that we are currently in. At the Opa Fest, it seems there are people who are coming into our country illegally. I don't know if they come into our borders. Some of them come here as business people. And I'm just wondering if the Department of Trade and Industry is not monitoring that type of business? Where people come into trade in what we are currently doing in the country? It's not something that you are not able to do business with? When it comes to the Department of Health, children consume food that they eat from these business people, food that is poisonous. Those people are operational. It's not even a secret. I'm here wondering if there are officials from the Department of Trade and Industry and Health who are monitoring these businesses to see if the food that the children buy from them is of the standard which is acceptable?
Social media.
We also have, we also have a challenge when it comes to social media where people's accounts, social media accounts are hacked. There are giving instances where people get invites from the president on social media and you just wonder. You just wonder why people are inviting other people, even the president on social media? Is it to uplift each other or why people do that? If they find out that you are the Minister of Social Development, they can even offer you to build a hospice for you, a building for hospice for you. And then you will then apply.
So at the end of the day, Romela was the last time to help to that, through social media.
And then you end up paying for these people because you believe them for who they say they are on social media.
Only if the department aids Amaya to be accountable in their public participation. In future, after this, they cooperate with Amaya to the small businesses, small enterprises.
I would also appeal to the committee to arrange for the small businesses to be monitored to see, to determine if those people are here and they have permission to run businesses in the country. I also blame us, the citizens, that we are the ones who handed over our businesses to them. And I don't think it's a situation that is determined.
Thank you. The last three in the first round.
Social, greetings everyone. My name is David Udisamu from Watne in Rastanberg, South Origin. So I support the General Intelligence Law Amendment Bill. So before I go further, I just want to understand which five provinces were targeted by the National Assembly and which four provinces are targeted by the NCOOP? National Assembly contacted public hearing. Western Cape, it was Abengue, it was Basulina Town, it was Mbalanga, it was Mbobo. Those are the provinces that were dealt with by the Ado Committee of the National Assembly during their processes. So now the Ado Committee of the National Council of Provinces, this is our first leg. From here, it's Northern Cape. And then it will be Free State and then it will be Eastern Cape. Now you can take the center stage. So So National Security Intelligence, my concern, we are here to amend the bill. So my issue, a problem in our country in terms of national security. In our country, we really have a problem when it comes to state intelligence. Because we have seen, for example, parliament just banned down. And as a result of that money that was meant for infrastructure development was then redirected to rebuild parliament. And also we want accountability in terms of issue or amendment of bills. So we got the leaders, those who have a self-gratification such as they enriching themselves. Only they do enrich themselves.
Thank you, thank you.
I support the bill.
I think you think you are in another church meeting. Thank you. Take the floor.
Okay, my name is Mesek Sata. From the Unemployment People's Organization in Watne in Watne. What could I say? I'm so glad. To just meet with the panel, this committee, I think, is the relevant one that we are looking for. That we are looking for the intelligence. I think we are right now, we are right now want to address you as the Unemployed People's Organization. Remember, we are under social development as an NPO. We are supporting the bill, but under these conditions. The intelligence has failed us so long. And I'm talking straight to this committee that is sitting here. You have dissimally failed us by allowing corrupt people not to account. How can you fail to just say, we are talking about the municipality, Rastanberg municipality? How can you fail to make, to make, to make the municipality account? You always see that they are getting clean audits. But now, our streets, our streets are in danger. There are no more people, what can I say? One thing I would say, our municipality does not work for our people. And those budgets that are coming from the parliament or coming from the treasury, they are just being misused. But where, at that time, we have this committee of the intelligence. One thing I just want to make the point again is point number two. As the Unemployment People's Organization, we are minding about the township economy. Because we believe that through the township economy, that's where we are going to create jobs. But our intelligence team that is sitting right in front of us is allowing foreigners to manufacture in the yards, is allowing the foreigners to not pay the tax. Personally, I see this committee as one of the useless
May I invite you to a group meeting? Group, community, yes, yes, speaker, rally speaker, rally speaker.
Now, when there are supposed to be community meetings, eh, when the mayor is there, you will come with this one people and then the speaker that will attend the same meeting.
Because, never, never do.
Because they are fighting between the two.
So, safety, I feel.
So now, where is, where is our security? Is our security guaranteed there?
Because they think it will not be allowed, so they leave from the parliament.
We feel that parliament should have long thought this issue.
Please, we are so thankful.
We are really happy to, to.
You are wonderful. It's kind of a flag of good hope we are not allowed to vote. After the vote, who votes you?
Please, don't just come here because it's during the election time and after the elections, we decide to not see here.
Was again tired first.
Re, reliable.
Intimacy.
Oh, there was a total failure. Thank you very much.
We would like to thank you for, eh, for raising those strong views, eh, on the, on the bill. We are going to have the second round of ten people. Eh, let's start this side. There's one, one, eh, one, and then two. And then that's three. That's four. That's five. That's six. That's seven. That's, that's eight. Yeah. Yeah, who's it, that's who's it, number eight? Is there any nine that side? Okay, then there's, there's nine, and there's ten. Yeah. Oh, yeah, eh, yes, can we then, eh, looks like we already have ten on this side. Do you have ten? Yes, okay. That's five. What we'll then do, eh, we'll have the last round after this. So you don't have to panic. Let's, eh, let's take number one to the floor.
Hello.
Greetings.
It's been so long since I've heard from what did you want my baby friends?
My name is Thomas Mukalee from what did you want my baby friends?
As a friend of yours.
It's a great summer.
Eh, I can't see.
Because of, eh, this reason?
Eh, after, eh, last year, twenty twenty one.
After the, the, the issue of the unrest of twenty twenty one?
Well, our intelligence is following one hour each week.
Ah, we could see that really our intelligence very big.
So, eh, you have for, what is this, who, what are the alarm, or what are the, I thought that we can follow me, I could see.
I am happy that, eh, at least we are here so that we must see where the loopholes are so that we can be able to accept them.
Was if we didn't, if we didn't, if we didn't, it was not the unrest of twenty one. That is, eh, one of the, our intelligence is, is already.
If we consider the issue of, eh, like twenty twenty one, our intelligence is still sleeping on the laurels.
Was so much as have happened, what will happen?
It is in the law, it is not hard for the government.
We got the issue, eh, it's a, eh, the good task.
We have that issue of the good task.
The Arab people, what is your soul?
They arrive, eh, by, 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 based in Yarona, yes, so, they want to.
It was all about, eh, yeah, in our country.
How did they come into our country? When the intelligence is there?
We got another issue, it's a, in the past two years ago.
Another issue happened two years ago?
Yeah, it was Bushiri.
Hanya Bushiri?
In that time, it was twenty one.
He, he, what's a, he, he, Yarona, when the intelligence is there?
So you ask yourself, eh, I can see in a time, eh, what's the?
Eh, you ask yourself a question, what were they doing that time?
So, eh, thank the unrest of twenty twenty one to make them work, eh, to help them, eh, so they can do their job.
So at least the issue of twenty twenty one, it opened their eyes so that they must see a bigger picture.
Thank you.
Yeah, love.
Thank you, number two.
Eh, hello, my friend.
Greetings to you all.
Eh, one of our, our, Thomas Toma, what thirty one, and I'm a, a municipality.
You, eh, talk about more, the one who is speaking is Thomas Toma, what? What thirty, thirty one in my, the municipality?
We as the community, we are suffering and we are wanting to assist us with this issue of people who are dying jobs. I support the bill, but I am afraid against that God should bless you, Mada.
Thank you, next speaker. Three minutes, eh, we agreed on three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Who's your mumela?
I agree to government.
Who's your mumela?
I agree with the bill.
Before he agreed, he not arrive in events, Mutsu Sima way.
My name is.
What thirty five?
Events, Mutsu Sima way.
Moses Scott.
From what thirty five in my Moses Scottani local municipality.
Where are you from?
My first complaint.
Who's your ally?
Government is here today.
You're gonna go after five days.
We gonna see you again after five years.
So what's your word?
What I'm going to say.
As you say, you're gonna say, who's your ally?
It's not for the first time to say this in front of government.
Yeah, so where is it?
I'm repeating it.
Who's your mumela?
Please do your job, government, please do your job.
Who's your son, pass every time more, more Moses Scottani, you need in or a way, your mumela.
Please check if workers in Moses.
How old are they?
What Danny are doing their work.
Why you so late, you're so early, come be ready to work, you have a push on.
They're not, they're not doing that.
Ah, they are, they are.
Are these papers going to local officers?
Now, let me see, maybe you're wrong, you're wrong, you're wrong. Register, yeah, oh, yeah, say no, push on.
Every, every employer signs the register so that at the end of the month, he must be completed.
You're gonna go, you're gonna check, you're gonna go, you're gonna. You've been a good man, you're best, you're gonna check it, go, 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 you're gonna, you're gonna.
Please, please monitor the local municipality, monitor, home affairs, monitor those workers, makers, who are waiting for government.
Now, let me, let me, you come, I'm gonna tell you, like a social one, come Moses Scott.
We, we've got one complaint here in Moses Scottani.
And now, what's your name?
We are from Zone Eight, the side.
But if I, I come, what's your name, on a, you're not, you're not.
Eh, residents from Zone Eight, we even have schools.
Hey, you're gonna go, man.
They are our people.
You're gonna come, you're gonna come.
But those houses are being occupied by the.
Why, why?
Our people are staying in sharks, why is it so?
But they're not okay, but, 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 but.
How do they get inside the country to come with their children?
You're gonna go, you're gonna go.
Please do your job.
Hello, well, like, if you're a person, you're willing, can you?
We not, please don't come back again so that we repeat what I said.
You're gonna go, you're gonna go.
I agree with that, I agree with the bill, please, please.
Thank you, the next speaker.
Mumela, follow. Eh, greetings to everyone.
Eh, Kalimna, Kina, Elsie, Knafoi, Watetuan, Madibe.
My name is Elsie Fang from Watetuan, Madibe.
Eh, who's your mumela?
I support the bill.
Nah, how long, how long, how long?
I don't want to be long.
You can live out of, now, you're Watetuan, have you told the, ah, from Moses Scottani? Eh.
I'm not, I will not come here and complain about our issues from Watetuan about the municipality.
Eh, oh, Watetuan, Rashata, service delivery is slow.
Eh, service delivery in Watetuan is very slow.
Harre, harre, eh, harre, they're weak, eh, Mokatsela, refairwa, eh, Madibe.
We, it's not the counselor who's letting us down, it is the, it's Madibe.
Now, let me go, Ma Tuna, ah, harre, eh, when I had a Madibe, go, go, say, beg, eh, in the, the, the. Go, say, beg, eh, 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 eh.
I would, I would really appeal to you, our leaders.
You're gonna go, la, la.
Eh, I'm looking at the, 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 I would like to give you a cup so that you can get me water.
The, 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 ha, fe, ta, we, 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 eh, we, we, eh, we, eh, we, eh, eh.
Eh, when the, 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 does that, and realizes that, that we do not have water, then I will start talking.
...similar to this one.
Create submission, yeah?
We made our submission.
Yeah, yeah.
Even now, even today.
Yeah, yeah.
To date.
Yes, yes.
We have not had any response.
Yeah, yeah.
Now we understand.
What you want to record?
The driver of the tractor.
Don't you follow Ferrari, yeah?
This Ferrari will never be able to drive this car. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Gade. Can take the next speaker to take the floor?
Thank you, is that my greeting? Eh, I would like to present here our honourable members here.
Eh, then for Tombe, we are not a party, parliamentarians.
I understand that they are called parliamentarians, members of parliament.
Eh, my name is Benjamin Duambohe.
Inala gay, Benjamin Duambohe.
I'm from Watseben Bojala, Rastambe.
It's Watseben Bojala, Rastambe.
Kiliye fela pothosa pothabi ye.
I'm here to support the bill.
Maybe in Alinkaga, na tsepe, it's a town, tsepe wa tama, we are not.
I just want, I just have a few issues that I want to raise here.
Eh, 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 what are the intelligence, eh, nothing like that. I think you're saying, oh, the host of the time, twenty eight, it really good album.
I, I believe that eh, the issues of our intelligence in the country are issues that we should not hear from you.
You must prevent the problem before it comes to us.
Let's talk, let's talk about, 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 about Corona.
Yeah, you, you know, you're not here, you're not here, you're not here.
Now it is us who are coming to you with our problems.
And you're not here, you're not here. South Africa is very attractive.
Eh, the, the biggest issue here is that our country is very, is a very attractive country.
Yeah, you, you know, can, but to, but to, but to, eh, me, so, but to, but to.
Now, we attract a lot of people from all sectors into our country.
And they will be about. But again, it's hard for you to listen.
And most of them come here with eh, eh, they don't have good intentions.
Eh, it's all, it's all, it's all technology.
Eh, I'm present here with the issue of technology.
Particularly, you matter, oh, my, ah, for.
Eh, especially this one of cellphones.
Eh, can I play on, eh, Corona? Eh, the company, if we let it, I would be the business in the part, but, but.
Eh, during the period of eh, Corona virus epidemic, eh, companies gave people permission to work from home.
Actually, the eh, 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 government, eh, eh, the company permission for their car.
Or actually, the government gave companies permission to allow their employees to work from home.
Now, eh, what are new information, eh, I certainly see.
Now currently, our information is not in safe hands.
Therefore, we are aware. How you see, well, I'm, I'm online, I'm online, I'm online, I'm online.
Bring back the death penalty.
I'm not able to, I'm unable to.
Let's bring back the death penalty. Whoever that kills must also be killed.
Well, whoever, because we are in law order, we are.
Eh, let.
We are going to do what we have to do.
Eh, let the death penalty come back because now we can see that.
Speak to the mind, speak to the mind.
Eh, eh, let the death penalty come back because people don't value human beings like anyone.
Thank you very much, I support them.
Thank you, next, that's one.
You are a very.
Eh, good day.
Kalina, thank you very much, I'm from WhatsApp. Eh, I agree to this.
My name is Kevi Amorhetti from WhatsApp.
I agree to this activity because of the government is failing us.
Eh, Kevi, my name is Malane, the mother of Romo, oh, God, that's how my body is.
Um, Roma face, yeah, I'm there, it's me, Roma face, yeah, I'm there. We are, you can't tell me, so, girl, I'm a girl, you're a girl, you're a woman, you don't know, they're bad, that's for it. Roma face, yeah, I'm there.
Eh, because our home affairs is failing us. When you arrive at the home affairs offices, you discover that you are married to a person that you don't even know.
If not, you are not married, either you share identity with somebody else.
If not, then there's issues where you share your identity number with somebody else.
Some way, you go complain about the police station, the reason you complain is because. You don't know why.
Eh, the reason, the other issue that I'm complaining about is the police station. When you have an issue and you need the police to come, they will always tell you that they do not have transport. But when you look around, they have gone to visit their girlfriends or boyfriends using those vehicles.
And beside their car. They will not get help, but they tell them just they are desperate to come.
Eh, even in the case where somebody trespasses in your own property and you call them, they will never come. But when there is mob justice by the community, they come running.
Some, some foreigners, foreigners, foreigners are not just taking our businesses, they not, they are not just taking over our businesses.
Even there were our health facilities, they go to our health facilities, they use, they get medicines which is meant for us. They get a hospital bed which is meant for us.